That's it, Mayor, thank you.
Anybody else?
I'll just say, if we don't vote yes, Mrs. Easley might come, no care. But, no, good job, and thank you.
What else? Mr. Mark, did you hear that? He's afraid of Mrs. Easley, Travis Hickey. Remember Travis, you're on camera, so don't worry about it. Janice, I appreciate all your hard work, and we haven't seen enough of you lately. And I appreciate you saving it. And probably one of the reasons, Ms. Burke, is that it's the oldest band shell in the state of Iowa, is that true? Yeah, and so I think a pretty good group of citizens decided to say, you know, that the city would make an effort and save that little piece of history. And Janice, I appreciate all your hard work and everything you've done. Thank you, Mr. Weaver, anybody else? Ms. Silver.
Your years of dedication, Mrs. Easley, are, it's like, I just can't even say enough, great job.
Thank you, Ms. Silver, anybody else? Mr. Marsters, how are you responding, anybody else? Mr. Marsters was on response.
Yeah, just a little follow-up. Acoustics was brought up by the speaker here. And there's no argument that it's not the most acoustical stage. However, most of the time, most of the people who perform on their exclusion of the city band, or the municipal band, have sound systems, so it doesn't really matter. I mean, I've watched that over the years, this is all started, that they use sound systems, so it really doesn't make that much difference. And the only other point I wanted to make was, now I can't remember what that was.
Clear Lake.
Well, yeah, Clear Lake is, no comparison was built, it's a totally different time, so that's really no comparison. Oh, I know what my other comment was. You know, I originally was like Ms. Burke, I was opposed to saving the band shell, not the same thing, it lived its usefulness, and it was no more than what I call the shell. But what amazed me was, and it's in my board, but what really amazed me is how many people that live in the northeast part of town actually are attached to that remaining. So, over the years, I've changed my opinion of saving it, so, thank you, Mr. Marsters.
Thank you, Mr. Marsters. All right, we have a motion in a second.
Marsters.
Yes.
Picky.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Tornquist.
Yes.
Silver.
Yes.
All right, thank you very much, thank you very much, Mrs. Easley, and everybody who's donated this money. Number 21, the administration recommending approval authorization to post signs restricting parking along the north side of First Street Northwest in Washington and Adams Avenue. Is there a motion, a second on this item?
So moved.
Is there a second? Marsters, and discussion on it. This will be your first, Mr. Weaver. Yeah, did you, uh, did you hear from the parties that brought this forward, are they happy with what we're doing?
Is this a solution, a good solution? Yes, I think they are.
Great.
I mean, it will eliminate any site issues, and all the time that, and so, it will solve the problem as far as any potential, um, site disruptions to Michael.
Yeah, well, that's what it's all about. Good work. Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Anybody else? All right, we have a motion in a second, same note, for call.
Weaver.
Yes.
Marsters.
Yes.
Silver.
Yes.
Tornquist.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Picky.
Yes.
All right, thank you very much, Council. Uh, number 23, administration recommending approval resolution of adopted policy for consideration of the nine appealed insurance claims and the moral obligation insurance coverage for the city of Mason City, Iowa. Do we have a motion in a second to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Well, I'll second it for discussion.
All right, Ms. Marsters.
Uh, no comment.
Okay, Mr. Weaver, here's a second.
Um, I don't have any comment at this time.
Mr. Tornquist.
I think this is well-intended, I have no issue with the intent, um, but as I stated during our work session last week, I think we set ourselves up for more issues, and this in the end will do more harm than good. Um, if you take a look at the write-up that we have in the packet, towards the end of the first page, the first paragraph, "The issues related to making payments to individuals by use of the moral obligations in certain insurance are numerous. The method to decide on what claims are paid or not is a difficult process. The $10,000 will not go far. I would expect citizens to not care that our fund from the ICAP is exhausted if they have a claim that they feel we should pay. Our budget cannot support this type of expenditure in any great amount." Again, I think that the motivation behind this change in policy is noble, um, but I'm concerned that in the end it'll do more harm than good, and I'm just not comfortable supporting.
Thank you, Mr. Tornquist, Mr. Weaver.
Well, then, I would, I, I would just have to say that, well, I'm gonna go with, earlier you spoke highly of Mr. Trout and his recommendations, I'm gonna stick with Mr. Trout's recommendations. I kinda like what he says here, the 1, 2, 3, 4. And quite frankly, as I spoke the other day, it doesn't really matter. If a citizen wants to come forward and, and call up a council member, or two, or three, or four, and have them come out, convince them that they were wrong, they can do that, and that's gonna continue to happen. So, you know, it doesn't matter if this passes tonight or not, I'm gonna, I'm gonna support working hard for the citizens of Mason City when they feel they've been wrong by their government. And in this case, Mr. Trout's laid out four items here that I think suffice, and, uh, we can have a recommendation from him, up or down, but we can also, also, uh, bring our own stuff forward too, with, with that resident, and, uh, Dr. Trout's members. I do have a question, does this impact Mr. Ritter's issue at all, either way?
His item might have to be put back on the agenda specifically, in order...
Are you gonna put that on there?
Um, the request was made, that we postponed it, until we have that item here, this item, I didn't wanna pursue putting it on the agenda, so then we had a decision.
So then, once we get this up...
One way or another, yes, it would go end up going back on the agenda, because the decision that was made to postpone.
Thank you.
It'll be back as a separate item, if this item is approved, or whether it is approved.
I know we had four votes at that time, you know, it'll be interesting to see what happens.
Ms. Silver.
Well, due to the fact that, um, I am in the insurance industry, this is a little more near and dear to my heart, and, um, I have talked, uh, at length with our claims people, and expressed what we had going on here, and they tell us time, and time, and time again, stay out of it. You know, we as agents, we're not trained to do this, we, we just need to stay out of it for liability reasons. You start doing this, you know, somebody might not be happy, and then they're gonna come back, they're, well, you pay so-and-so, but you're not gonna pay so-and-so. They, they just suggested that we try not to get involved in this. The intent is great coming forth, but again, I'm gonna reiterate what Scott just brought up here, um, our budget cannot support this type of expenditure in any great amount. Um, I don't wanna set us up, um, for any potential lawsuits down the road, and I, I just can't be supportive of this tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Silver, anyone down here? Mr. Hickey.
I have a couple of questions for you, Brett.
Okay.
Are you still, are you still in favor of this?
Well, I think, if, if, the bottom line is, if council's gonna consider this type of, of program, we need to have a process. So, the bottom line is, if we're gonna enter, if we're gonna consider them individually, as Mr. Weaver stated, we can do that, but if we're gonna consider a process, and consider these as they come in, anybody that wants to appeal it, then we need this process. Otherwise, it, it begins to be, you'll see every one of these, and I, I don't think that's the intent of this type of, of coverage, is that you see every one of these come before council. Um, if it's not approved, then it'll be, as Mr. Weaver said, if one council member feels that somebody should be paid, then it would be brought before the council, based off of their recommendation that it be considered. Because the bottom line, this coverage cannot be granted, a payment cannot be granted to an individual without affirmative approval of the council, or members, or members would need to approve this, a payment to an individual before it would be approved.
'Cause, 'cause my question from the workshop we had, is we have a list of about like 110 names of people that have been denied.
Yes.
And the thing that really struck me is, we only have a $10,000 limit that we could have over the course of a year, and, again, $10,000 isn't much money when you come down to any significant claims, could be one claim. So, uh, this is what concerns me the most, so...
What I can tell you is that, since I've been here, there have probably been three or four claims that I would have considered recommending for approval, and most of those were in the less than 500 category.
Okay.
Water heater, uh, things that we were clearly, notice wasn't given, that caused an injury or, or damage to the individual, that we probably could have avoided the situation. Um, not something where they ran over a bottle and broke their tire, we, there was nothing that we directly were responsible for, other than the hole opened up and we hadn't got to filling it up. But that's an immunity clause for ours, for us, so, that's, that's, that's how I see it, is it'd be a very, very small number that I would be bringing forward, the recommendation.
Okay, so you're comfortable with that?
I think so.
Okay. I'll support you, though.
Anybody else?
I want your response, Mr. Tornquist.
Yeah, I just wanna commend my colleague, Councilman Weaver, for, for, uh, establishing the city administrator's recommendation as the litmus test, and remind you that the city administrator strongly supported the micro enterprise program, so we'll look forward to you bringing that back forward.
Hold your breath. Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Weaver.
Last I can find a way to cheat. Anyway, uh, here's what it says in the page here, 23, just here, information, this isn't something we hashed up here, this is what it says, "The moral obligations insurance coverage is a new form of insurance coverage that did not exist for the city of Mason City until we changed from the traveler's insurance to the Iowa community's insurance pool." So it's not something we fabricated, it's some new program that obviously, there's an issue with, uh, city's insurance and the citizens in it, and the denials, and I wanna correct you, Travis, if you're gonna put numbers out there, be accurate. I think you, you, and Matt, you should write this down, uh, 110 claims? That wasn't in one year, you should finish that sentence over, over, I think it was five years.
Five.
Yeah, you should, you shall finish that, you know, instead of spoofing everybody, the fear factor. So, so I'm gonna go with Mr. Trout's recommendation on this one, because it's moral obligation insurance evidently. Insurance companies, they coined the term moral obligation. I feel we have a moral obligation, then, other than just, just saying no when you have a claim against the city. And when you read those 110 claims, which I'm sure you did, you'll see it's everything from tires to, you know, I, I mean, there's some legitimate claims. A city tree falling down, smashing a fence, 500 bucks, you know? Squad car on a pedestrian bicycle trail, emergency vehicle, sign says no, no vehicles allowed at all, and spooked the cows and got a bicycle rider hurt. Well, I think there's, there's some stuff there. If you're gonna represent people, you need to represent this side of the table, or you can do what you're elected to, represent that side of the table, that they pay taxes for. So I'll support it tonight, appreciate your hard work, Brett.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Ms. Silver.
On what I just heard Mr. Trout express, that the claims that he thought would be reliable for, they were around $500 or less. Life would turn them into insurance, to risk on insurance rates going up, just pay on that out of our pocket ahead of time. I mean, you can have the people come in, fill out the claim form, if you know that the insurance company's gonna deny it, bring it to the city council, say, you know, what do you think? I mean, I don't think we need to go to all this work for under a $500 claim. Just my opinion. Like I said, you're supposed to raise the rates, you know, you're gonna start having people keep filing frivolous claims, potential frivolous claims for this and that and the other thing, in hopes of appealing and getting a payment. I, I just think we need to be...
Spoken like a real insurance agent.
Councilman, don't interrupt the council. Ms. Silver.
I don't...
Thank you. Councilman, please don't interrupt the council while she's talking, when people don't have your time, all right? Anybody else? Mr. Hickey.
I think we just got off track a little bit, um, as usual, but, uh, the, the comments are, develop a process for Mr. Trout to bring forward to us. And again, Mr. Weaver, I said I supported, because Mr. Trout's in favor of it, so, I'm ready to vote.
Anybody else? All right, we have a motion in a second, for call.
Marsters.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Picky.
Yes.
Tornquist.
No.
Silver.
No.
Motion carries, thank you very much, Council. Number 24, Mayor, Councilmember Marsters, motion, direct staff to develop options to strengthen the animal control ordinance for all such vicious animals to be brought to council in the workshop, for developing a suitable ordinance amendment. Mr. Marsters.
Um, so, you have one motion, Brett?
Yep, yep.
Okay, so move to direct staff to develop options to strengthen the animal control ordinance relative to vicious animals.
Is there a second?
Sorry. Any discussion, Mr. Marsters?
Well, yeah, I, you know, I don't know if it needs to go to the workshop or not, it depends on what staff comes up with, I think that's more staff's decision to make, because we can all read each other's problems, and how we do. But, you know, in the past, I don't know, 10 years, it's obvious that the number of vicious animals in Mason City has grown tremendously. And last year, there was an incident, and last year, I asked my colleagues and the city attorney and staff the same question, are we gonna wait for a fatality of a young child before we do something? So, I mean, I think we need to take some kind of action, and I'm not for outlining certain breeds of animals, but we gotta control them, and that's what this is all about. Have staff develop something that's fair, and bring it back to us, and put some more tea in it, maybe reduce the numbers of vicious animals, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marsters. Anybody else on this? Mr. Tornquist.
Good point, thanks for bringing it forward.
Thank you, Mr. Tornquist, Mr. Weaver.
Yeah, just for, uh, accuracy, we're not passing anything tonight, right? We're just getting someone from...
This is just to drive staff to spend time, although we know council has the wholeness as part of that. Right. Anybody else? All right, we have a motion in a second, for call.
Marsters.
Yes.
Tornquist.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Picky. Yes.
Silver.
Yes.
All right, motion carries, thank you, folks. Uh, number 25, Councilmember Tornquist, recommending approval authorization of wave of past due bill from North Iowa Fairgrounds resulting from the 2009 PGI event, and the amount of $6,617.99 for traffic control. Do we have a motion, Mr. Tornquist?
I, I do, and it is written, so you'll need to try to keep up, Dan, I'll pass it down to you.
Okay.
Move that the council accept $22,500 from two private entities to pay off the past due water bill of the North Iowa Fairgrounds, and that the council transfer $6,617.99 from the Hotel Motel Tax Fund to the General Fund as reimbursement for city costs associated with the PGI event, and we forgive the North Iowa Fairgrounds for the past due bill of $6,617.99 for these expenses.
Second.
All right, thank you. Mr. Tornquist.
Wait, I guess I, I need to hang on a minute, just a second, if you're... Yeah, in a nutshell, uh, just from the Hotel Motel Tax proceeds, the city took in a little over $9,000, and our expenses associated with police overtime and so on was the $6,617 that we're forgiving. So, in a nutshell, the PGI event was a net income generator for the community, and really, whenever we can work together with the CBB and the Fairgrounds to have events, to draw people in the town that are net revenue generators for the community, it benefits all taxpayers. I believe that in light of that, what we really had was a process issue, and, and, and we're gonna try to fix the process in the next agenda item, but specific to this request, I think it's in everybody's best interest to forgive this particular debt, it's covered, and not only that, but we absorbed it in the budget a couple of years ago, the money's been gone for a couple of years, so all we're really talking about is reimbursement to the General Fund anyway. But it's real, what's really important about this particular opportunity, if indeed we move forward on forgiving the debt, we have two private entities that are, like, ready to pay off the past due water bill immediately, that's worth $22,500, and I believe the Fairgrounds has every intent, they have so stated, to pay that off, it's over a period of years, whereas we have a, an opportunity right now to take that money and put it in the bank right now. So I think it's win-win all the way around, um, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Tornquist. Anybody else? Ms. Silver.
Well, I've been advocating for this for quite some time now, because I think it's just the right thing to do for the Fairgrounds, because they're very important to our community. I just want to point out that Mr. Tornquist mentioned earlier that the city total, um, was $9,076, and the Visit Mason City total was $13,614. Keep in mind that that percentage is now flip-flopped on these, because the city is now at 55% and VMC is now 45% of the Hotel Motel Tax. So, keep that in mind for future, um, PGI events on that. And just got a few figures here, and, and 2005, when they were here, we had, of the PGI participants and their families, there was 2,836 folks here. So you take that amount, times the amount of days that they were here, times approximately $89 per day, um, in 2009, that generated $1.7 million worth of impact to this community, so that is very, very important to us. Um, I really would like everyone to support this tonight, thank you for those private entities that came forward to pay off of here. And thank you for your patience with us.
Thank you, Ms. Silver, Mr. Goddard.
Yes, I, I wanna apologize first, I meant to speak first on this, uh, before Councilman Tornquist made his motion. Tonight, I received word that the first party that was interested in $12,500 donation made the decision that they think that this is a forgiveness of an existing debt, rather than a new grant for their program, they didn't feel it was sufficient. The second party, which is the Kenny Lindstrom Foundation, is willing to give the $10,000 still, and we need, would need to seek someone else to replace the other, about $11,000, as far as their, uh, as far as forgiveness of the water bill. I still think that, uh, even with that unfortunate news, and up until, just until their board meeting, this other group made the decision not to, in the end, support it. Everything looked positive, and that's why I didn't contact you until I just got the word of six. Um, so, I still think that even forgiveness of this is the right thing to do, and to seek some more, along with the Fairgrounds, ambitiousal person that's willing to come forward and meet the other amount of obligations. So, I don't think this is the end-all, be-all, I think the motions should stand, but I think that the other, uh, forgiveness of other, uh, others that will give money, I think will probably happen.
May I amend the motion?
Yeah, I was just, I guess you added, it basically probably amended to 12.5, and...
Why don't we just simplify it, and forget about the, the water bill stuff, and just say we're gonna forgive the loan, uh, 'cause I support it even if we didn't have anybody paying off...
Is there, is there a second on the amendment, as soon as there is? She made the second.
That's mine.
Mr. Weaver, we're just gonna continue, just...
Thank you, uh, well, again, what Councilman Tornquist read, and Janice Silver, here's, you lost me, it sounded like a great idea.
It is.
But what lost me is this.
Councilman, don't interrupt.
Thank you, Weaver, thank you, it's all clear. Thank you. Here, let me read this to you, this is Mr. Trout's words, this is where it lost me, this is what I don't like. "I feel the reasons outlined above are enough to support forgiveness of the past due bill and provide future event support. In addition, these reasons we have been approached by two entities that have offered 12.5 and $10,000 respectively to pay off the past due water bill of the North Iowa Fairgrounds, Mason City. And the city of Mason City will forgive the PGI bill for $6,600. Support for the Fairgrounds by these organizations is commendable." And it is. "Then, the city has not included assistance to the Fairgrounds the last two years, we provide $10,000 per year." So, what we're saying here is, is, it's contingent upon us waiving the $6,600 to, to get those two grants. If we didn't do that, they pulled their grant away. Well, that's in essence, think about it, would you, if you pay this, we'll pay that. I can't do that up here, I think there's laws. I don't even wanna go there, please, Mayor, I've got some time left. I don't even wanna go there, I don't, I don't even understand that, so I don't like that at all. Now, earlier this year, we wrestled heavily with paying, forgiving $6,600, and we said no. I'll tell you what this, what can happen here, is, why doesn't the responsibility of Visit Mason City come into play? We know that they've got about $80,000 over there from Hotel Motel Tax, why don't they just take $6,600 and pay the bill? The, Visit Mason City, they're our partners here, and again, where's the county? Just sitting flat-footed, you know, we're right back to square one. I'm not, we, we worked a deal out where you're paying your bill, $6,600, I'm, I'm comfortable with that. Now, at 6 o'clock tonight, Mr. Trout, the red phone ringing, and 12.5's been yanked from one of the commendable parties, uh, in the, it's qual, I don't know what happened, well, this doesn't meet my qualifications. You know, we have a fiduciary responsibility to all of our citizens, not just the Fairgrounds. It's been banging around a long time, it's just something they gotta work out, and, and they have a couple avenues, they can go to the county, who owns the Fairgrounds, who, who contributed to the PGI also, but we never hear anything there. It'd be like me saying, I'll tell you what, I'll pay $3,300, and let the county pay $3,300. If they do that, I'll pay $3,300. Let's see what happens there, why don't we just do that? But anyway, the, the, the Visit Mason City, they're the partners here in promoting this, you know what, they can, they can give $6,600 too, if you sit on the board over there, do it. This is just another way, until I found out tonight, that these two good partners were gonna bring this money forward, only if we forgave the $6,600. You know? I, I just don't like being put in that situation, and you shouldn't either.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Mr. Marsters.
Yeah, first of all, a question, Mr. Trout, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think there's some inaccuracy here, wasn't the police bill originally $8,000 and some dollars? Right, it was, it was originally $8,616, $8,200. So some hasn't been paid. Right, okay, I just wanna make sure that was clear. Um, besides that, you know, there's no doubt that the Fairgrounds is a benefit to this community, no doubt whatsoever in my mind. I also think that this city council has sent a strong message to the Fair Board to get their act together and do a better job out here, no offense intended, but, I mean, we've held $11,000 for two years in a row, so we've more than made up the difference in what it's, what we're talking about forgiving tonight. So, I totally support this. Um, and the last thing, in fairness, Mr. Trout, I asked when we forgave the penalties for the water bills for report, have they been regularly made? Yes, they have, I mentioned it in, in one of my, uh, one of my newsletters, I, I made a short brief mention.
Okay.
Right now, yes, they've been making payments in their past due amount, this due is $20,330 right now.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Yeah, there's another report due this week, I believe, they get paid on the 15th.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Trout. Thank you, Mr. Marsters, anybody else on here?
I agree with Councilman Marsters, I think we've done our part, we've, uh, did our diligence, we've worked with the Fairgrounds, we've, uh, as he put it, uh, held firm for the last two years, so I think, uh, I think this is a good gesture, I think it's a good idea, it's time to get it over, and, and, uh, Councilman Weaver, you said you couldn't be held, I think you did the same thing with micro enterprise, when you won your $165,000 appointee, but, uh, it is what it is.
You're not gonna get your micro enterprise money.
Council, council.
No, I'm just saying, you said you couldn't be held hostage, but, I was just making my point back.
Keep your hand in the air, and I'll get back to it, so...
So, anyway, I'm in favor, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hickey. Anybody else support a move to, response? Mr. Weaver.
Yeah, we, and one more thing, that's kinda valuable to me, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but, we're gonna receive $10,000 from Kenny Pioneer, but we turned them down, they came to us for how much money, and we, we didn't let them be one of the outside sources we funded. They wanted how much money from, from, to contribute to Kenny Pioneer, I think they wanted help for the utility bill. They came to us, and, and we turned them down here at the last budget cycle, and the one before that also. Kenny Pioneer was one of the outside sources that we're looking for funding. Kenny Pioneer was one of the outside sources that we're looking for funding. Why don't we, you know what? You guys are just fooling yourselves. You should just tell Kenny Pioneer, look, keep your $10,000 and help yourself, because they'll be back at us next, between November and March, asking for help with the, I, I hope you've seen the cycle, what we're doing here. And by the way, when we were first, when we first talked about this support, we had it on the table. I think it was, I think somebody was going to forgive 20, was going to contribute $22,000 the first time if we paid the, the police, they were on pay-out. So, we've had, we've been here before. Our account was changed, or I guess they made some good payments. You know what? There's other sources, the county and the, and the Visit Mason City. And I'm sure Kenny Pioneer will need to get that $10,000 back to help them in their budget next year, so I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver.
Think about what I'm saying, will you?
Ms. Solberg?
I just think it's rather fascinating that $6,000 is a thorn in Mr. Weaver's side where a child's life doesn't mean much, so I just, I can't, I can't.
Out of order, Mr. Mayor.
I can't even imagine that $6,000 is that important to you.
All right. Thank you. Let's refrain from personal attacks. Anybody else? Anybody else?
This is totally uncalled for, Janet.
Councilman?
Totally.
We, Councilman?
Totally. I'm not talking about children's lives.
All right, anybody else?
Put words in my mouth.
All right. Motion. In a second.
Can I clarify as the motion to waive the past due bill from the North Iowa Fairgrounds report resulting from the 2,000,000 PGI event, $6,617.99.
Got it.
Tornquist?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Weaver?
No.
Marshers?
Yes.
Hickey?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Number 26, Councilmember Tornquist recommending approved resolution authorizing the use of hotel motel tax to support large tourism events, Mason City. Mr. Tornquist, give your vote.
Move to approve the resolution authorizing the use of the city's hotel motel tax to reverse the general fund for civic expenditures required to support tourism events.
In a second. Second.
Yeah, this, this came about as a result of a meeting I had first with Administrator Trout, January 13th, give or take, and specifically, we were talking about the $6,600 we just forgave, and that led to a meeting that I had with Sue Armour, I'm going to show her, I don't know, a couple weeks later. We met for quite some time, and I came to have a better appreciation for the impact on tourism on the community, and in fact, that's where the numbers came from that we just saw hide in number 25. But where the rubber hits the road is right now, the CBB is negotiating with PGI to come back in, what, 2014, 2015, and they don't want to see, they have issues with the way expenses were divvied up. Now, one of the issues that I had through that whole process is I don't want somebody from outside the community coming to Mason City and tell us how we have to go about paying our bills. But when you get right down to the bottom line, these events are a net generator, and it only makes sense that we go ahead and take care of the traffic control, the other things that we need to take care of to bring these events to town. The alternative is we risk losing them, and they're net generators. Not only that, but they bring quality of life through events and opportunities for the people that live here, in addition to the new people that they bring into town. And kind of the process that the four of us came to in January is, look, most of these costs are foreseeable, they're forecastable, and therefore, they're budgetable. And so, as the CBB is negotiating to bring tourism events to town through the course of the year, and as they land events, during the budget process, Sue, or whoever's heading up the CBB, needs to work closely with the city administrator to make sure that we're properly budgeting for these events. The primary issue that I had as a councilperson, I think the primary issue we all had, is that we had an $8,000 bill, or whatever the more accurate number was that you used, Councilman Marshers, that wasn't budgeted. And so, we were put in a position where we were pulling from reserves, and none of us liked that. So, now we have a process, and it's spelled out in the resolution. We're going to be a little bit more systematic about how we forecast, how we budget, and indeed, even if we use these, these proceeds from the hotel motel tax fund, it's still a net revenue generator for the community. Now, I'm understanding the CBB will follow up after the fact and, and develop real numbers as best we can to show that indeed, some of these events for which were incurred expenses were net revenue generators. And if we get into one or two of them that ends up not being a net revenue generator, then maybe that tells us there's some things we need to do when we negotiate the next time around. But I'm confident that when we look at the bottom line at the end of each year, even if we had one or two losers, which I don't anticipate, at the bottom line, we're going to be way ahead. So, I think this relieves the CBB of, of a hurdle that right now, they have to come to City Hall to help, help clear when they're negotiating potential tourism events. It's going to streamline the process for them, make it a little bit more simple, and I, hopefully, it will make us all more successful bringing people to Mason City.
Thank you, Mr. Tornquist. Anybody else? Mr. Marshers?
Well, I'm not sure that in this example of what took place with the PGI, last PGI event, that this resolution would have fixed the problem, because my understanding was the whole budget thing felt through the cracks to begin with, so it wouldn't have been addressed at budget time on this particular event that took place. So, I mean, it addresses it, but not 100%, because if we had it budgeted for it, then how do we draw out of the hotel motel tax when it basically goes into the general fund? You follow my question, Mr. Trout? I don't. So, it doesn't totally solve the problem.
Yeah, it, well, what we'll do is, with the information, usually, these events are made years in advance, and a project of what we determine as to the cost that they expect to have, and we'll develop a budget cost for the event and then put it into the project. Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, I think what you're saying is we learn from this mistake, and it probably wouldn't happen in the future.
Right, because we had discussions about potentially us paying for it, and then those discussions didn't get finalized and formalized.
So, in that, in that aspect, this will take care of it. Thank you, Dan.
Anybody else down here?
Correct me if I'm wrong, I think you were pretty new to the city administration when this first event, last event, when it was negotiated, yes. And I think that's part of the reason.
Right, we didn't crack. We didn't memorialize it in a written document and understanding, so.
I do like to, I do like the new process, so thank you.
Anybody else forward with a response? Mr. Weaver?
Can I use these numbers? So, here's the funny thing about what you want to do that doesn't make sense, and I've been getting these, and by the way, I don't think it's the convention of visiting barely more, it's Visit Mason City.
Yeah.
Visit Mason City. Ms. Solberg serves on the committee, I guess, and so does Travis Hickey, so I understand where they're going to be coming from. When it says people times day times 89, you're talking about each person's $89. I got to tell you something. See, that's, that's, that's what's wrong here. I, I had several friends, actually, I'm a real bit of close friends with Jerome Oskic of Flashing Thunder, that helped put on the PGI, and I've been in any conversation with him, including the one back in 1998 about bringing the first one here. Jerome plays a real big part there. I can tell you this, Jerome brings about 10 or 12 family members over in a camp ride outside the fairgrounds racetrack, and there's no way those 12 people spend $89 a day. That'd be 12, that'd be almost 1,200 bucks in one day, per day. See, that's what's wrong with the, with the Visit Mason City's numbers. You can't sit down and say every per, so that little kid Jerome's grandson, hey buddy, you're going to spend $89 a day and bring my ball cards home? You know what I mean? I'll sell them my ball cards, you know what I mean? It doesn't add up. They just don't. And by the way, Jerome was loaded with better, they, they did make trips to Walmart, but you're not faking a couple other things, Sam. Remember that last night of the PGI and the big power outage? Why don't you ask Heidi West on which food they threw out? What it cost them? And again, the restaurant owners, they overordered. They didn't have nowhere near the business that they were promised from the first time even the second time. So, I don't know what you're talking about. If you were talking about, is it going to be easier on the pocketbooks of the taxpayers in Mason City under property taxes? I'd probably go along with that. But really, all you're talking about is, is giving a break to the business owners. They make more profits. Well, how does that impact me? How, literally, how does that impact me? I don't get it. And this figure that you're using here, Ms. Solberg brought tonight, says that each person is worth $89 per day, six days. You understand that Jerome's family spent $89 a day for each person in his group? That'd be $12,000 over the week. Who spends $12,000? I'd go to the Grand Canyon and back for less than $1,000 bucks. So, I mean, that isn't even, that's what's wrong with the numbers. So, and the other thing I want to say tonight is, and I've been looking at those numbers, and I know all of you have, you get those Visit Mason City numbers a month, and I know you all look at them and raise your eyebrows, even you, Mayor. You're like, well, that's a pretty good number. It's crazy. It's the good field thing that we do. But what really amazes me is, and still amazes me, Kevin Jacobson, our finance vector's eyebrows are up almost to his toupee, to the top of his, his hairline. So, I, I'd like to hear from Kevin Jacobson. I want to know, I think Kevin needs to come to the microphone, Mayor. I'd like to ask him a couple questions. I have 204 left.
Mr. Jacobson?
It's the city finance.
You think with the money you made, you could probably, you know? Now, listen, Kevin, how much money are we talking about in a year's time of the, you, have we talked about this at all since Friday? Have I talked about it?
I haven't spoken to you at all.
I haven't spoken to you at all? That's because we're fighting. Anyway, the resolution authorizing the use of the hotel motel tax for large tourism events. Well, right now, that money, how much is that money? A year that we get from the Visit Mason City, what's our share? Our 45%?
55.
No, it doesn't go into effect, I don't think, until when?
Yeah. Yeah, it's, the 55% is in effect right now. We get approximately $200,000, $300,000 a year, hotel motel.
And what do we do with that money?
Uh, most, well, actually, the, the city's portion of that goes into the general fund.
And what do we do with that money?
It's used for general fund operations.
So, that means if we take that money out of there, any money that we take out of there, will make the budget time harder on the wallets of the homeowners?
It's going to make it harder on the managers. We're not going to have that money to use for general fund expenditures.
And so, who would we turn to then for that money to fill the void?
Well, actually, because the general fund levy has had its limit, you would have to look at a reduction in, in the expenditures of the apartments.
And that would lead to possible layoffs?
It depends on how much money you take out.
I'm not looking for the trade here. I'm not looking for doing the trade here. This is, this is clearly, I, I applaud Mr. Tornquist for wanting to do this, but this is clearly a budget. When the budget rolls around, we talk about, well, how much of that $300,000 are we going to let go of and help plan? Here we go.
I hope you do, sir.
Mr. Mayor, just a clarification, the $300,000 is the total amount that we get really?
So, we get how much of it?
45% of that goes to the Visit Mason City. We actually collect it all, and then I write a check up to Visit Mason City.
Mr. Trout?
Yes, right. One clarification, thank you. Mr. Weaver's argument that we'll lose money, this thing is predicated on the fact that the event will bring in the money, and the only amount of money that will be given to the event is the money that will be generated by the event. So, the answers that he gave are true. We're pulling from the actual account, that's true, but we're not going to be, this will be money that's generated the way it's proposed. We will look at the amount of money generated by the hotel motel tax, and that's the amount of money that will be used to support the event if needed. So, he answered your question correctly, but when you look at, it's not the right, the right question to be asking in my mind, because it's not the event. You're, you're asking, well, yeah, of course it would.
You're missing the first, you're missing the first word.
You can wait until response, time's expired, Mr. Trout.
So, so, that, that is, he gave you a correct answer, but you asked a question that isn't really pertaining to the way the program is being devised, and so that's what I think needs to be clarified here. And, and the other thing is, is the amount of money that we're looking into, and the other thing is, is it only deals with hotel motel tax, not sales tax. The sales tax will be generated by the business they make to those businesses and restaurants and so forth, so we're not giving up that portion of it. We're only looking at what's given up by the hotel motel tax.
If I may, Mayor?
No, you may not. Mr. Hickey?
Okay, just so we can clarify this, this is going to be mainly used for police, for traffic control and things like that. We're talking probably about $6,000 to $8,000.
Well, and it's hard to know for sure, sir, how much will be, but yes.
Event, or if we need to.
So, that might even be enough to lay anybody off or cause any future jobs in the future. That, just, and just to clarify this, on that event, every hotel in Mason City and Clear Lake was bucked solid, and almost within a 30-mile radius. Sue Armour, I believe, is here or not?
The director's there, would you like?
That's true, isn't it? This is our, so, we not only collected hotel motel tax on every, every room in Mason City, we also collected local option sales tax for all the people that went to Walmart, Fleet Farm, eat out at all the restaurants for an entire week. I think we way out benefited what we are going to pay out back, as, as far as some police and fire and just some protection. So, I think we're just, again, trying to create controversy.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Anybody else have a response? Ms. Solberg?
And in regards to the comments about camping and things like that, camping's not free either. I've never ever gone to a campground and not made a dime. And you think about a whole, whole week's worth of camping, and you can't possibly bring enough food for 12 people when you're trying to grab all your firework displays and things like that. They're going to be out shopping, and it wasn't only Mason City that benefited, you know, with this, because 10, 20 miles away, they're camping in every campground they could think of, and the campers in those campgrounds really benefited from the shows late at night and, you know, in regards to the practices and things too. And I really, I really do believe we need to support this. Like I said, it's not any more than probably $10,000 at the most, and the money that's brought in is going to more than support this resolution that we're bringing forth, and it's also my understanding that PGI's consideration of coming here in the future years is that they don't have to pay these police bills, otherwise, they will go elsewhere and set up their displays. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Weaver?
Thank you. A couple things. Number one, the past president of the PGI, and Jerome Oskic lives 30 miles from here. He loves being here. I'll say something about it. Two, if, if you want to get the truth, let's ask the fair board members. They bring all their food, they catered their food. Last year, they had, out here, where do all the big shots go tonight to have a beer after the games? Mulligan's? Yeah, Mulligan's. Mulligan's catered it all out there to PGI. If you're a PGI member and had that thing, you ate free. They paid their own food, and I think the fair board members are included in that also, and some other dignitaries. They feed them out there free. That's what the restaurants had such a fit about, is that they were catered every night at 11:00, they had a great meal. Two, did they pay? Did they pay? Did they pay for camping on the fairgrounds? I don't think so. We have three board members right there. Dennis, did they pay for camping?
My belief, but they did. Come to the microphone, Mr. Mulligan's.
I was under the impression they didn't pay for their campers.
I can't really speak to it. Sue might have a better answer, and she's giving a nod that they'll say they did. You've got, you've got so many people that want to stay in the hotels, you have so many that want to camp on the grounds, and if not that, then they go out into the other campgrounds, and you've got such an impact out there, and we've got people coming in to buy the seats, to see the aerial and the ground displays, and you have so many people that are seated out in other areas, and so, it is such a wide-ranging event, and I, I think, again, I get to take the opportunity to thank you for what you've done here earlier tonight, but hopefully, that answers your question.
Mr. Weaver, go ahead. Thank you. No, and the other thing is, is it's predicated on what I read tonight. Somebody has determined that it's, every person's worth $89 a day. I have no idea how I come up with that figure, because if you take the local option sales tax, a penny, and you take seven cents motel hotel tax, whatever it is, I'm not even sure what it is, but if you add that up, that doesn't even come close to $89 a day per day. So, I don't know how you can do that multiplier thing that Visit Mason City, I've been giggling about it for years. I see these great numbers, you know, and I know you can do anything with numbers. But that eighty-nine dollar figure to say that everybody pays eighty-nine dollars a day, that's just wrong, and it's not accurate at all. And it's just funny money, and you're gonna say, well, that's what it brings into town, so we should give them X amount of dollars out of that fund. I don't, is it your recommendation to do this? You're the finance guy. I didn't hear from you at all. You're gonna have to budget with it. You got anything to say about it?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Mr. Trout, I'm just curious because we now know what the litmus test is. Do you recommend this item?
Yes, I do. And let me, let me make one additional comment. You know how you were talking about how can you figure out how much this is gonna generate? Well, the numbers are there in front of us. Sue has the numbers as to the number of rooms that are required to be held, the number of rooms that are expected to be used for each event. We can then run a copulation based on the average price per room and the number of rooms expected to be used to determine what the expected amount of hotel motel tax will be generated by the event. Therefore, coming up with a number that tells us what we should or should not support the event with. So, if they come to us saying, we're gonna have this many rooms, and it's gonna generate eight thousand dollars, and they want ten thousand dollars in support for the event, we say, no, that's not gonna be fair. It's gonna end up costing us the fund. It will end up costing the fund money, whereas versus the amount of money that we generate.
Mr. Tornquist, anything you want to respond?
Yeah, we've spent the bulk of the discussion on this item, talking about PGI, and this isn't about PGI. I guess it's natural to use PGI as the example because we just finished forgiving PGI, or forgiving some debt associated with that event from a couple years ago. But this is not about PGI. This is about putting Visit Mason City and the city of Mason City and the fairgrounds in the strongest position possible to attract any and all tourism events that want to come to Mason City. And that's predicated on us doing some estimating on the front end, making sure we budgeted. And then, just as we did with the numbers we saw in number twenty-five, if you want, you can forget about the numbers. From time to time, I've had difficulty with the same numbers, and I've had the same difficulties that you have. But we know after the fact from the work that we did following the PGI, that we came out ahead. It's a net generator. That's good for the community.
Thank you, Mr. Tornquist. Anybody else on response? All right. Can I have a comment if you'd like to extend the date, Mr. Weaver?
I'd like to extend the date.
Is there?
Just two things I want to say.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second your question.
All right, I'll...
Thanks, Travis. I'd like to ask you.
Councilman, Councilman? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, here's what I want to say.
Motion carries. Mr. Weaver, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Jerome.
Please stop interrupting the chair, Mr. Weaver.
The reason why I have so much discussion tonight, that's all I have in front of me, is a resolution. Doesn't say really much at all, two mind pages. Typically, when you bring something to city council, you give a background on it, you give your reasons why, the whole bit. This is all that I have right here. Mr. Trout said he was gonna be out of the office, was it till Monday? Well, anyway, this is all I have. So, I have a lot of questions. Now, if you just want me to rubber stamp stuff, then this is what you get. You need to be more clear. That's all I had, was the resolution. Nothing else explained it to me what was going on. The other thing I want to say is this, I was given ten free tickets to the last PGI last night. Ten free tickets, and I'll bet you there's other people in here can tell they got free tickets too, to fill the grandstands. I didn't use them. I gave them to everybody else. I told the guy I couldn't use them. But there was free tickets being handed out, and people were getting in free to pack this grandstand. Just want you to know that too. And load your numbers up too, while we've sold ten thousand tickets.
All right. Anybody else? Mr. Nelson? Anybody else? All right, we have a motion, a second. I hope that we've exhausted this item. Mr. Trout recommends this item, which is the current litmus test now.
Tornquist?
Yes.
Hickey?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Weaver?
No.
Silver?
Yes.
Marshers?
Yes.